First Selectment Meeting for Monday, December 20th, 2021 to order as per Executive Order and Legislative Action, we are conducting this meeting in a hybrid fashion. Charles, Item One, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public forum, anyone wishing to address the board in public forum on any item on the agenda? Hearing none, move on to Item Three, that's approval of minutes, three dot one would be the December 6th, 2021 minutes. Is there a motion?
Second.
And a second, second. Comment, ask questions, changes, et cetera? Ah, he's in person, we were looking for you on the screen. Hearing none, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, recused, or hearing none, motion carries. Item Four, Finance Director, Mary Jane Malveci.
Good morning.
Good morning, I know you're just down the hallway. Gonna give us our monthly finance report.
Certainly, we'll start with revenues. So we can see at the end of November, we're slightly better than where we were last year. At this time, we're at 55.8%. All of our accounts seem to be doing well. Unfortunately, my interest is still a little bit low, so we're going to be looking into that. And the other item, Rick happens to be in the, on the audience, I did speak to him about his revenue at the community center, he did lose one monthly organization since COVID, and that organization will not be coming back. So it is bringing his numbers down, and we did discuss already, looking at those revenue numbers as we move forward with the new year. So other than that, I don't have anything to report on revenues unless you have any questions.
Just quickly, on Youth and Family Services, that numbers up dramatically, obviously reflecting the increased demand for services, closely related services, which partially offset some of the salaries, the increases in salaries that we awarded ourselves in this budget. However, as Mary Jane is well aware, a good portion of that funding for those positions is coming from American Rescue Landlines, so. I'm just surprised, glad to see that, well, that's a double edged sword, isn't it? Glad to see higher revenues of Youth and Family Services means we have more children who are in need of services, so. Alright.
We'll have to take a real hard look at those numbers as we do the new budget. Inflating our budget for those types of additional services may or may not be the way we want to go, but certainly conversations to have as we work through the budget process.
Thank you. Anybody else on revenues? Got a couple tiny things. Okay. What, I mean, it's relatively small, but police is down a considerable amount from last year.
A lot of that is just timing and when the bills come in and, and how much usage we're getting, you know, out on the streets, so it's, it's a number that fluctuates year to year.
And, and we use, and that's for the most part is private contractors hiring.
Correct.
So that's their, that's their revenue generator.
Correct, I think if you remember last year, weren't, at this time, weren't we doing that big water main down Boston, you know, I'm not sure if that was that, that time, I seem to remember that being about this time last year, so that could have had something to do with last year's numbers being higher.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Shall we go to expenses?
Expenses are, we are exactly where we were last year, and as you go through the departments, you see that they're all pretty much in line. The only one I wanted to discuss is capital, as you can see, it is overdrawn. As Matt alluded to just a moment ago, we are covering some of our expenses with ARPA funds in that capital line, not only are there potential ARPA transfers, there's fund balance transfers, all the expenses for the new permitting software that is being funded through our fund balance technology account are, is, are in those numbers. So as those projects complete, we'll be able to bring money in from other sources, but until they are, we will see this line overdrawn.
Well, we also have 60% of that encumbered at this point, as well.
Yeah, mu- much of that is, you know, ARPA and some other fund balance transfers embedded in, into that encumbered number.
Thank you. Anything else on expenses? Great place. Something that's public works tweak my interest. I think it was the overtime, relatively good shape on overtime for public works at this point.
Yep, but we are heading into the season, so, you know, last year, last year, I think we, you know, had a couple of windstorms that, that caused their over, some overtime usage by now, but we haven't had any of that this year.
Anybody else? No? Okay, Mary Jane, next.
Next is medical, um, November was a very low month, under 600,000 for claims, which is bringing our projected surplus up about 600,000. We had a, had a slight jump in catastrophic claims, we are at 8.5% usage, at 8.3% usage at, at the moment.
MJ, we had the benefit of some discussions with our insurance consultant, was it last week, I believe it, and we were start, starting to get some preliminary numbers, which quite honestly, were not very promising. And it was largely on the, on the, on the base, not largely, but the historical trends, but also the, the expenses through the first three months of this year, three or four months of this year, this should help bring that number down a little bit, if I'm not mistaken.
Hope, hopefully, our, you know, usage coming down will help those numbers, they, they did come in a little bit higher than we all expected, we'll be working with our consultants over the next couple of months, so the numbers you see coming forward in budgets might look a little higher, but we, we will be working to try to bring those numbers down before the budget is finalized.
Anything else, MJ?
Uh, not on Item Four.
On the financial, any other question? Well, hopefully you'll get a few more questions this, this evening from the Board of Finance.
We'll see.
Alright, Item Four Dot Two, Consider Take Possible Action to Transfer $538,182 From Unassigned Fund Balance to Fund Balance Committed to Future Payments and Recommend to the Board of Finance the same.
So when, when we did the transfers a couple of months ago, to be honest, I, I missed this one, and as we were going through finalizing our audit, it, it came to my attention that we hadn't moved the, the premium credits, so these, this is money that we earned on selling our bonds for a higher rate than we had, we owed on them. As you know, through the years that we were doing this for the Guilford High School, we were putting this money aside in fund balance and using it to mitigate the bumps up in our mill rate due to the debt service for the high school. We are still receiving really good credits from our refunding in, in our, on our refundings. I'd like to set that money aside and continue to use that money to mitigate our mill rates, even though we are seeing our debt service going down, we could even make that jump even further by using these credits. If the credits aren't used in this way, it just goes into our general revenue and, and gets lost at that point, but it is an appropriate use of these funds, and I'd like to request that this be done at this time to be effective for the June 30, 21 audit.
Okay. Anyone want to put that form of the vote? Feels like an enthusiastic, yes. Taking now this motion?
Thank, thank you, Mary Jane, for that clear explanation.
Great, alright, so Lou, you moving?
I'll make that one.
A sec, any further questions or comments of Mary Jane on this issue? Mary Jane, thank you for, for bringing this to our attention and making it as clear as you just did, so if there are no other questions or comments, let me try your minds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, recused, or hearing none, motion carries. Uh, Four Dot Three, Discuss and Take Possible Action on Salary Budget Transfers for Fiscal Year 21, 22 Due to Union Contract Finalizations and Recommend Those to the Board of Finance. Who's taking this one, venture, Mary Jane?
That would be me. So as, as you know, we've finalized some of the contracts, let me step back, so when we did the 21, 22 budget, almost all of our contracts were still pending, we've had a lot of them, the, the budget lines came in at zero because we weren't, we didn't know what those numbers would be, and as you know, we do budget some funds into an account called Reserve for Personnel, we have funds in our budget, $200,000, and we also have over $200,000 in fund balance to cover any overage. So the GEA contract and a couple other contracts have finalized for this year, and I'm requesting that money be taken from the budget, the budgeted $200,000 and moved to these accounts so that as we're moving forward during our 23 budget preparation, you'll be able to look at better numbers for this year in comparison to next. So you see the whole list on page two of some of the pluses and minuses that have come through, the numerous accounts, all for salaries, full and part-time salaries, therefore, change, changes with, due to the contract negotiation, there are some new, new positions in here that have been approved and, and some changes like EDC going from part-time to full-time, so you see a negative in one line and a positive in another, but all of these are all contract driven, so I'm requesting that we move 199,058 from Reserve for Personnel into these various line items.
Thank you, Mary Jane, is there a motion for same?
I'm second.
Second, comments, questions?
I just have a quick question, some, some of the entries seem to be negative entries, I don't know, for instance, part-time public works and part-time economic, what's, what's that about?
A lot of times, it's when we change positions from, like, so EDC was the one that I said we're gonna, you know, move that from, you know, part-time to full-time, and it's just a matter of, sometimes we have new position, new people that have come in, and it has changed that number, or we've, you know, moved things, we've done so much moving around in, in engineering, I, I think, I don't have my detail in front of me, maybe Mitch can remember, but I think there was a change in, in the, in the part-time salary. But I, I don't see a negative in public works, I'm not sure which line item you were.
Public information, I'm sorry.
Oh, public information, okay, I'm, I, I was trying to wrap my brains over what we did in public works, and I couldn't figure that out, that's, I forget the gentleman's name, Mike, was it Mike, that used to come in?
GCTV film, okay, okay, I got, I got the picture, okay, so you're just adjusting part-time, full-time and other internal changes in a department?
Yes, yes, sorry, I was trying to figure out what we did in public works, and I couldn't.
Okay, anything further? Motion on a second, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, recused, or hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mary Jane.
Thank you all.
Item Five, Parks and Rec Director, Rick Maynor, come on up to the table, Rick. Forget the guy who's bringing really good news. Item Five Dot One, Moving From the Table, Take Possible Action on the Contractor for Installation of the Splash Pad at Jacob's Beach.
So Veronica Wallace and Andy Sorrentino here, and they, they are two-thirds of the committee that did all the initial fundraising, as you know, COVID hit, and they weren't able to raise the money, you know, that was needed for this, but we, we have a big splash. There's an anonymous donor who is going to contribute $311,000, they actually want to give us $325,000, they also want to pay for the expansion of the disc golf course. For this project, they, this came out of the blue, it just came out of nowhere, I got an email, I guess, two weeks ago, and from a person representing the anonymous donor, they want to remain anonymous, I don't know who they are, but they want to contribute to the splash pad, $311,000, so all the hard work that these ladies did paid off big time and more than big time, it, it'll fund the project, it'll complete all the funding that we need to make it happen. The only thing that isn't happening, Carrera Landscaping has volunteered to put in the brick papers, so we took that out because, you know, local company wanted to do that, so, but then this money, we have to still buy the, the bricks and everything, but they're gonna install them. So the proposal I'm making too is to award the project to Emmy O'Brien and Sons, the, the cost of the splash pad and all the amenities minus the papers is $282,557.23, but I've included 10% contingency in the, the donors aware of that, so I want to make sure they, they understood, $28,000 is contingency, and we may not need it, but they're willing to, they want to still fund the whole thing for future maintenance or whatever, but I want to make sure they were aware that, you know, that was added into this. So the amount to award to Emmy O'Brien and Sons under the MHEC, which is Massachusetts' Higher Education Contract, and, you know, we looked into that, Pete confirmed that it's a, you know, it's a source that we can use, and so the contract number is MC15-B14, excuse me, and so the, the award would be $282,557.23.
Rick, that's absolutely terrific news, for someone to step up, particularly anonymously, is absolutely phenomenal. And you and I have had several conversations on this, and this is allowing us to do some of the things that we might not have been able to do based on preliminary pricing and some of the ancillary equipment around the splash pad, so they have, they've expressed a willingness to pick up those pieces as well, which we might not have done, so, undoubtedly, truly generous, and of course, at this time of year, could be, be more reflective of the, the mood that most of us, if we don't, so.
I, I agree, I, I really think it's outstanding, especially, you know, in this community, so many people do step up like this, the, the, I don't want to be a downer, but I do have a question, I mean, the last time we, we talked about this splash pad, there was considerable concern about the bids coming in, much different than we had anticipated, have have we followed through on that, I mean, are, are the bids back in, in the realm of reason?
Well, they're, they're still a lot higher than, but when the budget, was it 2019, I think, maybe that that was present, you know, everything's gone up so much, and.
But they were going to double check that they were accurate, that was my concern. So they did go back.
So this number's locked.
This is locked, yes, yes.
This, which is why we're coming before you now, because if, if you grant us the approval, we can sign the requisition forms today, the, the lead time for delivery on this stuff is phenomenal, it's 12 to 20 weeks, if it goes 20 weeks, it puts us really on the cusp of being able to get it done before summer, hence why we're.
The last information we had is that we felt that, or whoever was in charge at, at the construction company had felt that, you know, some of these quotes were rushed and maybe just ballparked and everything, and, and we were waiting for them to finalize and, and that, and this is the way it's come down.
Other quotes came in roughly around the same price, it's, it's crazy.
So the original price, I'm all for this, and I know it's gonna happen, but I just want to ask some questions, that's all. The original quote was somewhere around 180, and then, then you gave us the news that the quotes were coming in at like 480.
180 was the estimate, now.
Right, the estimate, but then you were telling us it could be as high as almost a half a million dollars, so now you've got this locked one at about 282, so it went up, but not to the horrible levels that we were first told, right?
That's correct.
And that's the logic of locking it in now, case.
And then my other question is, this wonderful donation, when you add the 282 and the 28,000, that comes to about 311, right, which is what the gift is, and then what do, what are the committee's plans for the funds that you raised, which is over and above that, right?
Right, so a kiosk that will, immoral, what's the word I want? Memorialize.
Memorialize.
Yeah, memorial, thank you, memorialize the donors that we've had, specifically our big sponsors, which are local businesses such as Page Hardware, Bishop's, as well, so that's a kiosk. In addition, we have to put a fence of some sort around, that's required, it's a zoning issue that we have to do, that's something we'll be using, the water usage, so we won't have to come for a budget line item for water for the season. Okay, now, the other thing that we haven't talked about, that I'd just like to also bring forth, is that I, I'm, the committee is pretty confident we're gonna be able to rent the splash pad out so that it will bring back revenue to the town as we go forward, once it's built, you know, birthday parties, family events and things that happen down at the beach and off, you know, so I mean, all that needs to be worked out, but that was also something in the discussions that we'd had, we, we're trying to have it make money as well.
That's great.
Well, let's not use the words make money as much as offset some. I mean, I mean, that is a very fine line, I know, at the marina, it's always that, I mean, you know, it is a service for us.
Yeah, you're correct.
And even dark and rough with their face, it's kind of to just, like you said, offset.
Support the program.
Yeah, I mean, this is not a, for, you know, we don't want to have a golf course discussion.
Exactly, great, any, any other questions?
I, I just have a pile on the accolades, and, and you're right, everybody, everybody said, it's amazing, the community's amazing, people like to step up, it's also a reflection on, frankly, all the good work and reputation that Park and Rec has developed and work of the committee, that somebody would have the confidence to commit this kind of money, this would be applied in a way that's beneficial to everybody, so really, thanks to everybody who's made this happen.
As much as I respect somebody's desire for anonymity, or whatever that word is, I wish there was some way to, you know.
To recognize.
Yeah, not only recognize, but just to thank them, I mean, it's a big deal.
We, we're in discussions to do something, perhaps, video clips and things like that, that we could put together and send back to the anonymous donors so that they, they are aware of how grateful we are, some sort of like the opening, or even as construction to face, taking video clips and making it all together so they can see.
We, we do have a conduit, their financial representative is individual that approached Rick, it was not approached by the donor themselves, so Rick has a conduit to get to them, and clearly, I think, we could put a proclamation together, you know, thanking the anonymous donor and pass through some.
You have to know, is, where the person, is the person from Guilford, or we don't even know that?
There's a, yes, yeah, I know, I don't know if they live here now, but they, I was told they have a connection with Guilford, that's kind of what they, they represent it, so, but I know the, at least from what I've heard, I don't know if they do now.
And I think one of the conversations you had with me, you mentioned that they may have said something about they had grandchildren that lived in the community, or?
Well, that's, because I asked them why they go out with the disc golf course, you know, so when I got this call, this woman said that a, a donor who wanted to contribute to improving recreational amenities in Guilford, and so I, I just went through the, the five year capital plan, just, you know, here are the projects, and I, I didn't know what they were looking for, you know, what kind of thing they were interested in, and I, I wasn't asking for all that, I was just, you know, what are, what are their interests, I don't know, senior citizens, I had no idea, and so I went through the whole thing, but then they said splash pad and disc golf, their grandchildren play at the disc golf course, they want to help improve it.
Great.
This is probably something for a different discussion, but I just would like to bring it up right now, we were gonna use some, we thought we might use some ARPA funds for this, which probably will not, but don't you, you, I think you have some other beach improvements that are always there, like those canvas shade things that were provided, so maybe we can, I, I think continuing to upgrade the beach is a great investment for us, maybe we can look at some of the ARPA funds that we would have used for the splash pad for other beach amenities, I guess.
Yeah, I, I agree.
That's what I'm trying to say.
If you may recall back, I think it was in September when we approved the, the first round of some ARPA funds, Rick was, let me say, the most aggressive department head with his list of projects, which included playgrounds, you know, playgrounds, basketball courts up at Bitner, which will eventually replace it, so I, I don't think there's a shortage of opportunities to use the for, for parts enhancements, you're up to.
Half jokingly commented to Matt beforehand, we're gonna have to increase the parking lot.
I don't like half joking.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, it's gonna be real.
We are, part of what we, we, I think, maybe we use some of the ARPA funds for the guardrail, and we talked about guardrail, the guardrail's there now, we, we're gonna expand it toward the, beyond the Picknick Valley, and so the last couple of years, we've been setting up stakes and caution tape to kind of create parking, we want to formalize with guardrail.
And Rick and I had a conversation on Friday, at the senior lunch, we talked about potentially doing something to clean up that parking lot, no matter what we do, it seems that potholes start showing up midway through the summer, and we have public works standing back, I took my car in here, you know, the other day, it's like a minefield, trying to work your way around it, so I had asked that Rick reach out to Janice Blazek to talk about opportunities to do something down there, one of the concerns we have is, you know, stormwater runoff and putting, you know, non-permeous surfaces down, down there because of the impacts of the stormwater runoff, but clearly, there are some other solutions that we can look at, so.
Yeah, sometimes it's, you know, grading issues and drainage issues.
And that's it, I did, Janice, and I did talk, and we're gonna talk in capital, too, if I don't, can we use asphalt down there, she forgot to leave, but, but she said there's a new kind of asphalt that is permeable, something that, I don't know what it is, but somehow water drains through it, so something, a relatively new product, I guess, so that's something to look into.
Good. Okay. I guess we need a motion to approve running the project, and the O'Brien and Sons, the amount of $282,557.23.
Would love to make that motion.
Wait, is that the final number, or is it plus the contingency?
Well, contingency, no, because the contract would be, that's what the contract is, but I think we want, we're gonna hold the money aside for contingency, right, we don't know that we're gonna pay that out.
So the, the, the quoted price is more like 260?
No, the quoted price is 282, the total is like 311.
I'm confused. So 22 is within the contract.
They're gonna set aside the, they're gonna set aside the balance of the gift for the, for potential use of it, contingency, is I think the word you're trying to get at, so we're, this is actually, this is the contract that's being.
Okay, yeah.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second, any further comments or questions?
Well, just the mechanics of this size of a donation, as far as, you know, we're committing to a contract and, well, I'm sure we're, I just, you know.
That's a fair question.
Make sure we make some money.
It's gone beyond the phone call.
Right, yeah.
There's more that's happened behind the scenes.
Hey, I don't know, Mary, Mary Jane, have we talked to you yet, because they were gonna email you about the, the grant.
Uh, yes, so, um, I have all the information on, on who they are and who to contact, not the donors, but the, the financial, and I was waiting for this meeting to happen before contacting them, so then I could make the final arrangements, but we are very confident that this funding.
Maybe we should condition the motion, just to make sure.
So I would second that a bit, it makes sense to just condition upon the receipt by the town.
Exactly.
So you can move forward, but.
Yeah, you accept.
I accept that, amen.
Wonderful. Anything further? Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, recused, or hearing none, motion carries. Thank you both for the work you've done, and Rick as well, but I know this is, this is, this is, this has been, what, three years in the making?
Yeah.
So, congratulations.
I mean, you know, a whole year of just getting the plan together, and then we, 2019, we started fundraising, and we had fundraising all the way planned through the entire year till March of 2020, when COVID bottomed out.
What are you gonna do with all your free time now?
So thank you very much for the support, thank you.
Thank you for.
And everybody that's been involved, it's been a long and windy road.
You know, so many times, in different projects and grants or donations like this, it's being prepared and ready, it's what they call shovel ready, I mean, if you're there and ready for the opportunity, you can take advantage of an opportunity, so congratulations and thank you.
No, don't be too hard on yourself tonight.
And for the Rick, on that, is it good?
I think we're good.
Well, let's go to side dot two, which is Discuss and Take Possible Action to Replace Us to the Lights at Community Center Using Energy Bond Funds.
Well, thank you for this splash pad, thank you for proving that, so we, we needed to replace immediately, well, we need to replace 20 lights, but four, I was gonna come to, to replace four of the wall lights in the, I think I showed them to you now yesterday, in the, with the Whitfield Room and the Guilford Room, the ones in the Whitfield, none of them work, and it's, it's just dark areas there because of that, Guilford Room, which is the larger side, almost all of them are out, or they're failing, and so Mary Jane has suggested that there's money in the, was it energy? Mary Jane has suggested that there's money in the, uh, was it energy account, I think, Mary Jane? Energy conservation account, she suggested, well, if we had it in our next year's, I think, capital budget, she's, what are you going to do? Why don't you just do them all right now? And so that's where we're coming to do all, all twenty of them, instead of just the four and whatever other few, uh, other ones that are out on the other side.
What is it, the fixtures that have failed or?
Yeah, yeah. These days you can't just get light bulbs anymore. You have to replace entire fixture. It's just, it's crazy the way things are going. We just, uh, did the lights that you approved, um, the outside lights are getting, uh, all the exterior, um, parking lights, uh, those get replaced tomorrow, I believe. And, um, it's not just a bolt, you got to get a whole tire.
Were these LED? Or in some other?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, apparently, first of all, the bulb is integrated into the fixture, and despite the fact that they last an incredibly long time, especially in, in residential purposes, they do have a lifespan, and evidently twenty years is it.
Twenty-five.
Yeah. Twenty-five.
Yeah.
So that's not, that's not a shock.
These originals are the nineteen.
I don't think they are. They were replaced. Uh, I, I can't say that we, we're here, but when we did the, the Johnson Controls whole thing, these lights were not part of that.
Right.
For, I don't know why, but they weren't, they weren't part of that whole thing. So, um, you know, they're failing, we got to replace them.
This must include the installation, doesn't it? I mean, this.
Uh, no, it doesn't. It's just the, uh.
This is just the fixture.
Shipping, but the, uh, sad thing happened.
Who's going to do the installation?
Um, we, we're working with, uh, a local contractor, PEC Electric. We're getting a price from them. They'll be separate to have them install it.
What kind of ballpark number do you think that's going to be? I mean, this is a thousand dollars a fixture.
I'm going to guess about twenty-five hundred to install them. Uh, yeah, well, it's eight thirty-nine per fixture at plus freight.
Is there money still in the energy for the installation cost, do you think? Or Mary Jane? Could there be, could we use money from the energy fund for the installation piece of this?
Yes, so I, I just want to clarify that this is bonded money. Um, a few times, uh, over the past few years, we have put, set aside money in our bond authorizations for energy upgrades at any and all town buildings. So there are funds left over for this entire project.
Okay, so the question here is, uh, we have not gotten a definitive price for the installation.
I, 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 no, we, we met with people Thursday, and probably have a price today for the installation, but it will not be, uh, it may be a, a number under what you have to approve, you know, if it's under twenty-five hundred. I don't know what that is yet. I think it's going to be close to that. Um, but for this, this is first, at least the order of lights, because, you know, like anything else, it might take four months, four weeks, you know, whatever to get them. So we want to prove them. And then if the contractor, if it's PEC we're going to use, uh, and we get their prices more than twenty-five hundred, we'll, you know, we'll come back to you. Uh, or we'll get three quotes. If it's sodium, we got to come back.
All right, it's, I, I'm not a big fan of doing this piecemeal. Uh, it'd be nice to have had the whole contract amount here, but.
I think Rick makes a valid point about the, uh, the time lag.
The lead time, so, so that's exactly where it's going, Charlie. So rather than push this off another two weeks, um, I'm comfortable moving forward. This is a project we're going to do regardless of what the installation cost is going to be anyway. So, uh, so I'm, I'm comfortable with this.
And, and, and the, this is not just, so that does seem like a big number per fixture, but this is not just, it's a fixture, right? I mean, I, I don't, I can't visualize it happening once, but there must be some expenses associated with more than just the actual, you know, what bulb would cost.
Right, because it's, it's the entire fixture, it's a whole housing of it, I guess you'd call it, you know. Uh, again, you can't just replace bulbs anymore.
Now, are these, you're probably way over skis here and, and, and beyond it, but are we talking about like canister lights that need to be replaced? Are we talking about these kind of lights that need to be replaced? Are we talking wall sconces, sconces?
They're like a wall sconce, yeah. They're like a, I think they're like two feet, they're square, they're rectangular, and they, they light up.
Right.
So they're uplights that light the ceiling and reflect down.
So theoretically, the mounting of that is relatively, uh, easy, because you've got an electric box right behind it, right? This, the current sconce is on, and this is just replacing light for light.
Yeah, we're jumping to a couple of assumptions at that point. It's easy. But, you know, I, I think you hit it on the head. I, it makes sense at the lead time, we're all hearing about lead time in so many construction, uh, situations, uh, uh, the only thing I could say is if it comes in high, we're, we're going to have to get bids and that type of thing. So at that point, it's a bid situation, and there's nothing, I couldn't be able to change it. We, you got to go like this, suppose. I mean, it doesn't sound like there's any option. What's the point in having a room if you can't? Run extension board.
Well, you have the, you know, we still do have the overhead lights, but the, the wall lights just add, it says more than any, you know, system in the building, it doesn't hide.
Yeah, you got to take care of the building. To me, we learned that so many times, you know. This is not inexpensive, but, you know, you, you let this go, and then you let the next thing go, and all of a sudden, you got a major problem.
Okay, uh, is there a motion to approve, uh, contract, uh, number EB twenty-three seventy, uh, under the that's the on the, on the, contract, which is a consortium contract, uh, in the amount of seventy thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars.
Some would.
And a second, second, second. Uh, any further comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, stand, recuse, those, hearing non-motion carries. Rick, thank you very much. And you're welcome to come back anytime with that kind of good news.
Well, thanks. And, and the seniors will definitely appreciate you shed light on the building.
Working.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, item six, discuss the take possible action on a recommendation from the land acquisition commission. Bondish with ten million for the purchase of town land with the stipulation that, uh, seven and a half million of the money is to be used for the purchase of class A open space, and as defined by the plan for open space in municipal, uh, land needs, and two point five million of the money is to be used for class B and class C. Uh, Kevin and Gary, where are you?
I just want to say my grandchildren really love playing miniature.
Disc golf.
Disc golf.
Oh, you?
Thank.
Uh, you're bad. Well, we're, uh, we're, we're at the point where this is a final, uh, the actual request from the land acquisition commission, and I want to thank both, uh, Gary and Kevin for, uh, and the balance of the commission for the work. Yeah, uh, I know Keith Bishop, and there were several others, but, um, for getting it to this point, um, and in effect, for those in the, uh, in the audience, uh, who may watch it, uh, on a little later. Uh, this is in effect a continuation of what I think was a very successful program that was put in place about twenty years ago.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Okay, and it's about, uh, whereby the, uh, the, the town, the voters authorized, uh, an expenditure of up to five million dollars, uh, for the, uh, open space, uh, acquisition, open space land acquisition.
Open space and municipal use.
And municipal use, you're right. Thank you very much. And, uh, we have, uh, we're nearing the completion, or the depletion of that fund at this point. Uh, and there are, as always, there are parcels of property that, uh, become available that we want to take advantage, potentially take advantage of, um, relatively quickly, uh, with the, with the authorization. Because, because of the authorization, we'd be in a position to negotiate, because we had a funding source. Uh, so, uh, I probably stole some of your preamble, but so yours.
Well, just very quickly, this was approved in the fall of two thousand unanimously by the, uh, board of selectmen, which include, included, uh, Sam Bartlett, Gene Bishop, and Janet Pos. And the board of finance, which included you. Ninety-one percent has been utilized, uh, for eleven properties over the twenty-one years. Uh, for those that aren't familiar with the process, there's really five steps that have to go through before this is utilized. And there's a preliminary review by the board of selectmen, which has to authorize the appraisal, which we have to have before we can negotiate the process. And that's an informal, but at least it means the board of finance, the board of, uh, selectmen is aware of the, the, the property and the consideration of the property. And then it has to go back and be approved, uh, by the land acquisition commission, approved by the board of selectmen, approved by the board of finance, and approved by a town meeting. So there's multiple steps before we ever get to acquire. As I said, it's been used for eleven properties. Uh, on those eleven properties, uh, some of that has been deferred by, uh, seven hundred and forty-five thousand in, uh, grants that have been achieved. And the value of it is that the commission gets to negotiate knowing that we have a source. We can go to a, a, a potential seller and say, we don't have to wait a long time to raise the money. We have a source. We may or may not use it. I mean, there are other sources of money, but it, it says to the seller that the town has the capacity to buy, uh, or capacity to fund it. So it's, it's a very useful tool. Uh, the reason we're asking for, uh, essentially the doubling of that is the, the values have clearly gone substantially up over the twenty years. So, uh, actually, ten million dollars in real dollars is probably less than the five million dollars was, uh, twenty years ago. But, you know, we, we, we're establishing a process if we are to use, you, use it up in a shorter period. I'm sure some future board of selectmen will, uh, will move it forward, knowing that it's being used appropriately. So that's where we are. Happy to answer questions.
Do you think that, uh, for the public, you could, uh, define, you know, class A, B, and C?
It's. Class, class A is open space, um, and agricultural land.
Yeah, it's open space passive recreation with allowance for agricultural land. So it's trails, non, no structures, anything like that besides kiosk and a small parking area.
And B and C?
B is active recreation, which is your Bitner Park, your Jacobs Beach, um, those type of properties there. And then class C is municipal, other municipal lands, which are, um, school properties, um, town properties, like the property we're in right now, public works. And they have your, um, intensified type of developments there.
So by setting aside seven and a half for class A, that's leaving two and a half potentially for any administrative or town property issues as far as, you know, consolidation or, or, or anything like that, as far as, you know, the administrative side of town. You know, you're, you're talking about the properties of Boston Street and, you know, needing properties for storage that you've talked about over the years. Uh, is that an accurate assessment of what?
I, I guess we arbitrarily took the same relationship that the last bond had, knowing that if there is a big project, I mean, I will, I will point out that during this process, the town also approved what turned out to be an eight point two-three-five million dollar bond for the East River Preserve. Which was, which was different from that. So my point being that if it's a school, if it's a big project, if it's a, it's going to be fairly large, you're probably going to go to a direct referendum or direct purchase anyway.
And I understand that. It just said, yeah, we are looking at, you know, for instance, public work. I mean, you know, we have some projects, uh, potential projects on the, I mean, you're talking at twenty, is this twenty-year a bond, a twenty-year commitment, or is there a time limit on?
There's no time limit. There's no time limit. This is an authorization to bond. We don't actually bond for the ten million and sit on it because they arbitrage rules.
Yeah.
Prevent us from doing that. So this is an authorization to bond, and as the projects come up, we will, in our, our normal, uh, annual process of, of bond, bonding, going to the street, we would include these projects as part of that.
And I understand that. And, and I understand that any individual projects have a process of public hearings and that type of thing. Uh, but, you know, we are ultimately putting before the voters in April, uh, you know, a long-term commitment to the town. And, uh, I, I just want to help you educate the voters, uh, regarding, uh, use of, the, the potential use of this money is where I'm trying to get to.
If you're looking acreage-wise, I think we made purchase for the biggest area acres that we see currently right now, which would be for the, um, public works facility.
We, and we already purchased it.
Correct. And then the other ones would be probably a couple acres in size, so the value would be a lot less than the value.
Well, I know, but things change. I mean, there's always been a discussion about the Bitner situation and connecting the Long Hill and bridges and all of those kinds of things too. So I, that, that's why I just want to expand as much as I can, because this is a, a long-term commitment for the community. You know, I know it's not specific projects.
Long-term availability.
Yeah, that's a better.
I, I would, you're, you're right, but I would suggest that anything of substantial size.
It's going to have a price.
Go on a direct.
Yeah, and, and you're probably right. Uh, except, you know, sometimes, you know, opportunities come up and you, that are part of bigger projects that we have to respond to and that type of thing. So I just wanted to find that, uh, you know, because the split of, it, it seems to me that, uh, by restricting the, the seven and a half million for strictly open space, I, you know, I'm, I'm just struggling with that.
Well, based on, like I said, the, the list, uh, the potential properties that they see, and most of them are open space versus for the public uses there, uh, that you were talking about.
Well, that, that, that probably, that leads to my, to my next question, and, uh, you know, I, I understand that, you know, the five million dollars was allotted twenty-one years ago. Picking double the amount, ten million dollars. Uh, was that based on, you know, the potential property list or value? I'm trying to, I mean, it is a lot of money.
That was based on potential list in a negotiation with this board and executive session, because as you recall, the request of the land acquisition was a fifteen million dollar allocation, which, which you cut back to ten. So.
Yeah, I, I, I knew that, you know, we, we've had the discussion.
Right.
And I knew that there was, you know, some pushback, let's say, that, uh, and that's where I'm just trying to get to, because, you know, needless to say, uh, your committee's negotiating skills have been finely honed and I understand, and, you know, starting at one number, knowing that you might end up with another number, but this number that you've ended up is still double. I mean, you know, so we are not naive about that.
It doesn't need to be a twenty-year timeframe.
There, there's no, there's no timeframe on it at all.
That's my point.
There's four hundred and sixty-one thousand still remaining on the original authorization. And it's, which, which you.
And I just want to clarify, and Charlie, you brought up a very good point. Uh, was there a list? And yes, there is a list, which is subject to, which is, uh, subject, is not exposed to freedom of information. It's a targeted list that the commission has because it is, uh, it would potentially result in negotiation for those properties. Uh, we don't even have a copy of it. Uh, but we were given, we were given an opportunity to look at it. And I, I can't, I can't recall the total value, how many acres in the total value that's, you know, currently. And, and when I say target, doesn't mean we're going out to get all of these things. These are potential parcels of land that maybe have value to us, right? So I just want, you know, that, and Charlie, you're right, just so that this is more of the edification for anybody who's going to watch this at another point, that, that there is a foundational level that says, these are the kind of properties and potentially how much, uh, we might need. And if I'm not mistaken, based on, uh, a, a dollar figure per acre, this doesn't cover that entire list either, because then the reality is we're not going to get everything.
It's substantially larger based on assessed value, and some of these properties, they wouldn't sell for assessed value, but uh, and I'll also point out that there are names on that list that were on the list twenty years ago. With the original, you know, some of these are old family lands that may never be available, but, uh, you know, they're still identified as of value to the town.
All right, let me ask another question then. In, in our, in our assessment of town and departments' needs and properties and that type of thing, there, there may be some changes. And I'm going to use the example of Boston Street. I mean, if the, the garage there, the storage thing, you know, we were to finally make some decision with it, uh, do those, any proceeds from something like that, do they automatically go into a particular fund, or is that going to a general fund, and we have to vote to put it back into this or something?
We have a, we do have a, a land acquisition fund, which we, uh, we, we, we fund through, uh, things like self-power revenue. Uh, so yes, we could move that money, uh, into the land acquisition fund, which, yeah, there, there, the land acquisition fund, the last I knew, has had around seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in it. Um, so that's available for use. And we may have, I, 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 I don't recall specifically, but the two parcels of property that we have purchased recently, uh, Graves Avenue and the, uh, public works facility, a potential public works facility up off of Long Hill and Route Eighty. Uh, Mary Jane, how, did we? Mary Jane, how did we allocate the uh the 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 purchase cost for those two properties?
Trying to look it up real quick, you know, uh, one we allocate, go ahead.
Right, we we used the amount that was left under the B C allocation in the bond and the land acquisition fund. Actually, the last two that we used were driveway and so the last three were um fifty two church. Driveway and uh Route eighty.
Route eighty, right.
So it was, it was a combination of B and C and um.
And land acquisition.
Land acquisition.
You've conveniently segred into my next thought was, you know, it's one thing to talk about Boston Street and everything, but. You know, and granted it. It's it's potentially a long way off, but if public works were to make uh the move, you know. We're talking about that land at driveway would be available and that that's gonna be a substantial number.
That's right.
I mean, that's uh, you know, that's why I'm. I, you know, I I understand where the ten million came from, but, you know, it's a lot of money. And we'll just have to see what the voters decide, I mean, it's it's like, you know, the preserve and with the original five million dollar bond, that was a big deal then.
But again, I, you know, I would argue that it's been judiciously, I would also suggest. That the eight plus million with three million dollars of federal funds that went to the East River Preserve provided probably the single most utilized town facility.
I'm not arguing either, I support it all, it's just that, you know.
Well, the green was probably.
Yeah, the green.
Yeah, the green.
Uh, it was incredibly well.
Charlie, Charlie just brings up a good point, I think Susan was echoing, it is gonna be the voters that ultimately determine if this is appropriately sized.
Yeah.
Well, well, the other point there is um, maybe ten million won't fly in April, I mean, we have our own budget to pass it. Voters are in the in the booth there, our budget is number one priority. We don't know what the school has coming for bond, for bonded projects.
They will have something.
They will have something, so for us to decide, A, for us to decide now whether to bring this forward in April, I'm not sure, I don't know why we would do that now.
Right.
Um, and and B, if you were looking for five instead of ten, knowing that maybe you'd be doing it again in ten years instead of twenty years, might be a safer way to go, I I don't know.
Yes, Susan, a valid point there, I mean, we're approving this now and that's gonna eliminate. Our options going forward with the budget, I mean, you know, never mind what's going on with pandemic and and the rest of it, but uh. You know, this could be jeopardizing bigger issues, just.
If we don't approve it today, Mary Jane, aren't there a lot of um legal, legalese things that have to happen to get the bond on the ballot?
This would just be, this would just be step one, we still have to go all, you know, through all of the resolutions in the same way we do our bond. Um, authorizations with the budget, we'd still have to go through all of those.
Because if we put this off and is that, when is the drop dead for you to do all that preparation to get it on to the April ballot?
You could.
Regular budget.
You you could consider this at the same time you do any bond authorization through the budget process.
Well, how about if we do something today saying we generally approve or disapprove of this. Based on that future date when we have to make the commitment type thing.
That sounds like a motion.
Okay. No, I, you know, I I understand where you're coming from and and everything, it uh, but I think Susan makes a valid point. There are bigger considerate, not bigger, there are other considerations that, you know, we have to look at the big picture, you know, and uh. I I think that makes some sense and an emotion that is generally supportive, so that your committee, you know, has a sense of where we're going. But it does, you know, you gotta wait and see when it all shakes out.
Yeah, to Susan's point, I think we will, the way we do, way municipal financing and funding appropriations works somewhat limited, right? Uh, the 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 budget process is generally the most opportune time to do that, because. We're setting aside seven to ten thousand dollars to make that vote as opposed to burdening this project with potentially a separate referendum question. At a time to be determined, um, you know, interestingly enough, our neighbors to the east are have a bond question going out in February. Two months before their their budget goes out, that's a major, major project, not just similar to this, that's the renovation of the. Uh, the school in the center of town, the community center, so the the timing is never perfect, uh, and but your point is well taken, you know, um, do we. Do we think this might jeopardize the our ability to get a budget passed, uh, or to get a board of education projects passed? Or is it the reverse, you know, uh, would, you know, would would those sail through and disadvantage this, uh, this opportunity? Um, that's something I think we could determine, but I like Charlie's idea, general support uh for inclusion uh and and possible recommendation uh at.
With the reference.
At the referendum, yep. That's, sounds like Charlie's notion.
Yep.
Sorry.
Are you saying necessarily the ten million or at some some amount?
I'd be comfortable with the ten million only because we have the land, the land acquisition folks who.
Yeah, I mean, they've done the homework and, you know.
See, to think this is the appropriate.
You know, i- if we find that we're tighter than we anticipate on budget time and we wanna do, you know. Uh, a five for ten year type thing or something like that, that, you know, we, that'll be part of the discussion when we have more information, uh, so at this point in time. I'll uh, I'll move as proposed, uh, with the understanding that we gotta, you know, when we have more information, we can finalize it.
And what exactly are we moving, we're saying that we're supportive of the concept.
We support this recommendation and for inclusion in our budget deliberations, potentially the inclusion, so referendum question.
Let me just.
We have a second of that?
Go ahead, yeah, do your.
I mean, I'll second, I mean, Susan do it, but I'll second you, I'll second it, if you discuss, you go ahead.
Yeah, I I would just point out for just, I I understand that the gross number sounds big, but as an average, the last bond. Would have averaged two hundred and fifty thousand per year. At full, full utilize, and five million dollars over twenty years is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so if you use the same kind of.
Scale.
Scale concept for another ten million dollars, you're talking about an average of five hundred thousand dollars a year. Uh, to be utilized, and again, some of this is reimbursed by grants, I mean, it's an, it's a negotiating issue. Um, it's it's not, it it's not as much a spending commitment as. As the ability to to say to sellers that we we have the ability to fund, we're we're negotiating a process now where. Part of the contract is that this is the, the closing will be deferred while we apply for grants. But they know that ultimately we have the ability to 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 close the contract.
And, you know, I understand what you're saying, and I think those would be good arguments, budget type.
Simple that. Yeah, I just, I will quibble with you one point, it would be my expectation that maybe it's not in. Our our service, our service here. But our lifetime, twenty, twenty years and our lifetime as well, uh, that the town will fully expend this because. It's the right thing to do at the right time, so giving ourselves that tool to do it is is appropriate and. I would expect that over time, we'll, there'll be another land acquisition, we'll come back to the board like this and say, we need more, unless we've. Gobbled up all the filthy land in town that is uh, that that is deemed good for open space. And but and I, and that is also a question for another, another time, uh, at what point do have we accumulated enough open space, but I think that's a conversation for for another deck.
That's committee work.
Yeah. One thing, it's, the only thing I would insert into that is if you recall, when we. When the referendum went out for the East River Preserve, the vote was eighty eight to twelve in favor of open space. I mean, this town has historically substantially uh wanted and approved open space acquisitions.
And one thing we're finding too is that these larger pieces with these um bigger family plots, family members which are not, which are out of town now. Just wanna sell off the property and are moving forward with them or getting a lot more of this sort of request to look into. So even though that bond number is higher for open space, there's becoming a greater need for it because of these families which. Um, getting older and the the other family members don't wanna keep up the um, the property in terms of forestry or farming and stuff like that and just wanna. Um, get rid of it, get it off their hands there.
Agree. Without without having.
Development, development.
And I think salad is open and agricultural space as opposed to.
Well, and there's always that balance between, you know, how much open space and how much development is appropriate for our community, uh, in terms of. Additional tax growth without significant burden on services, um, you know, uh. The cost property or East River Preserve was a, I think it was a substantial amount of discussion was around what would be the eventual cost if that property was actually developed with. Two hundred homes on it or whatever the, whatever was gonna be potentially there, and I recall, uh, you know, Congress said, well, we might have to build another school, I remember people talking about that, we might have to build another school on that side. Well, take a look at what's happened to school enrollment numbers since that uh thing. You know, with, at some point, we may be looking at closing the school as opposed to building an own, so absorbing the future. Uh, development might not be as challenging as it was ten years ago or fifteen years ago, so, uh, but again, much larger set of discussions, so.
All right, um, if if I can close the discussion there, um, let me try your minds, uh, on Charles' recommendation.
All right, all right. I wasn't saying because it's a good question, gentlemen, thank you very much for your continued work and.
Take a quick break for the next agenda?
Yes, you, yes, you may.
Trace, we're taking a quick five minute. Or maybe I go back a lot. Okay, uh, item seven, consider to take possible action on the use of American Rescue uh plan funds for Shoreline Chamber of Commerce pilot program for business coaching. Dee Jacob, come on up to the table. Good to see you, for those who don't know, Dee is the new president of the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, good for you.
Good morning. Um, I've only been there three months at the Shoreline Chamber, but it's very clear in our economic region, which is Guilford, Branford and North Branford. That many of our small businesses and even some of our mid-sized businesses as well as nonprofits are still struggling from the impact of COVID. Even though they've taken advantage of PPP loans and EIDL loans. So part of what we're trying to do with the chamber as we go forward is find programmatic changes that impact and help our business community. The connect, the Chamber Economic Boost Program is a three-part program. It's designed to, first of all, provide mentors or coaches, if you would, directly to a business that might not otherwise be able to afford it. To ensure that they're solving the correct problem. The second piece is to um provide very short uh how-to videos on solutions and um details for businesses. Most business education out there available to small businesses are an hour long. I've never had an hour in my day as a business owner to go watch anything, so to create this YouTube channel type element. And the third one is to harness grants to be able to find sources for people that do need additional funds for the right problem. We're here today seeking seed money to our coaching for business success, this is a program that would be targeting Guilford businesses only. The impact of twenty eight or twenty nine coaching sessions. A small part of the funds would be used for administration, marketing, filling out reports because we are requesting upper funds for it. We're also seeking comparable dollars in the other two towns in order to have a focus program in each of the town. We have, we're in the beginnings of the recruiting of coaches, and these are people who might be successful business executives, retired business executives and professional consultants. The dollars from this program would go to pay the consultants, and this is an important, not an elaborate amount of money. But the idea behind it is because we have a contract and money, we can put criteria around to not make this be a lead generation opportunity for somebody. We really want it to have impact, why this is important. I spent thirty years in the consulting business and the number of times I came in that people were putting dollars towards the wrong problem. Um, was fairly high, and I'll use it this way, my sales are down. Someone is selling me a marketing program to go and increase marketing for my business. And the issue is, if you go down and ask them, the question is, well, do you not have anybody coming through your door, like, oh, yeah, they come through my door. Well, are are they buying what you have, no, they're not buying what I have. Okay, so you have people coming, you have a marketing problem, you have more of a sales problem, now is your sales problem an issue of product selection? Product price or customer service, so it's things like that, everybody would say, I can't hire anybody. Now, I can't get anybody to work for me, well, you might have an employment issue, but you could have a flow issue. That your people aren't operating in as an effective manner for your business, so our role is to. Test this product out in a variety of businesses in each of the towns, which do have very different economic um basis. And then as the program becomes more successful, we would look for other kinds of things, state and corporate sponsor, um, funding to keep this going.
What kind of amount are we talking about?
Twenty five thousand.
Twenty five thousand dollars is seed money on this, uh, and in fairness, shortly after. He had taken over in the chamber, we had a meeting in this room, she was very anxious to try to, you know, to see whether or not we could support something through our funds. And I think this is, in my mind's eye, this is not only a pilot program for chamber, but I think it's a pilot program for us in terms of. How long term, you know, in a long term basis, we're going to be supporting the our 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 business community with American Rescue Plan Funds. Uh, as opposed to just giving grants to people, uh, et cetera, so how do we, how do we start to provide tools for them, so. Uh, this uh presentation was made uh at the Economic Development Mission Meeting uh earlier this month. Uh, and they unanimously endorsed moving forward with it, as they think it has great value, uh, so this one, it's indeed for the, for for. Stepping up and and pulling something like this together.
Is this only gonna be available for chamber members?
No, so.
How do people, how are people going to find out or apply for?
So that's why that there are some administrative and marketing elements, so we we will be doing some door to door. Um, marketing, we will be doing some particular newsletters, it is um for any business in the town that wants to take advantage of it. We would do a rolling cycle of applications to um sort out which businesses that we can support, because we wanna take on those that are most at risk earlier in the process. And we, uh, the the monies will actually go to coaches, not to the business, so they can't normally hire a consultant to come in. Um, and so what we're trying to do is develop Guilford coaches, Branford coaches, North Branford coaches, and at first try to use. The town available coaches or town available businesses. Um, where, and we affect that each business will average about one point five businesses, the output will be a report to them. Which, um, in conjunction with talking with the business owner or business manager, um, this is what we've observed, this is what we discussed, this is the areas of opportunity. And some references of places they could go next. Um, the other two parts of the program are, we are not gonna be coming looking for urban funds, the second part of the, for the education channel, we have um. Opportunities for grants to fund that, and the third one is um tapping into some what already are harnessing opportunities for bigger dollars to come and smoke. Small business and to be the facilitator of that, we would also work with the businesses for the coaching program and getting the application filled out and make sure we have all. The applicable detail we will need to create the reports to meet our requirements.
Just that, Sherry Cody will be working to help promote this program uh through through tools she has at her disposal. Which is, we have a constant contact list of all the bill, uh, of of most of the businesses, I wouldn't say we have them all, because maybe some, you know, old base businesses that we're not, we're not tapping into. Um, so she's got a significant uh reach there, uh, the Green Merchants Association uh is another uh group to tap into. Um, so those.
The state list as well, and we'll put on the state list on Guilford too.
So none, none of these funds would be available to the business owners?
That's correct, what this is providing, um, coaching and mentoring that they couldn't necessarily hire directly. Um, it's, it's um, an agreement with our coaches is that they would be taking what is particularly below trade. Um, type funds, because they wanna do good for their local community as well, but we wanna. local community as well, but we want to have the ability to control what the product is and that they actually provide value in terms of this.
Anything further?
Yeah, I have a question. Has the chamber done anything like this before? Have they ever provided similar service?
Not the chamber that exists here. There are other chambers nationwide that are doing a variety of programs. Some are in the grants program specifically. Always chambers do education programs. But in terms of this, this is a little bit more unique. It does line up with a lot of my background in terms of how effective that we can be. And it's, it just follows the element, you know, got to make sure you're looking in the right place. And we see in spite the infusion of a lot of dollars through the programs that have existed, we have businesses that are still operating models that that were tried and true 20 years ago, but not for these economic times. And we want to ensure that we have the best chance to store funds fill. We want to make best chance that we continue to have a vital business community, which is what we have in common with the town and the chamber.
So is there any, it seems to me the most effective type programs are public-private partnerships, really, and this is a variation of that for sure. It sounds like it's going to be administered by the chamber.
That's right.
Fund in coming from through the town, this federal source essentially. Is there any thought given to to picking up this over time as a chamber expense and funding it for a longer period of time? Or, you know, it's like, what's sort of the vision in terms of, because we're not going to be paying for this forever through ARPA funds.
This is this is Seed Bunny. In order to prove the viability of the program in each of the unique towns, and so I'm going to talk this town in particular. Long-term, how we use funds, we've gained corporate sponsorships that have helped us fund programs. There are other routes for us to seek long-term dollars. Just like every other business in the area, our Shoreline Chamber was impacted by COVID because we survived because our members paid dues. When our members are struggling, they don't pay dues. And so, you know, obviously, it's a benefit to us that some of the businesses we may help may be members, but it very well could be all of the businesses could be non-members. And it is the right thing to do because my mission is to work cooperatively with the town to create a vital economic climate. And that's what we're trying to do is our mission. We do expect to partner. Some of our coaches may be a route for us to find other sources for money later on, proving the program is successful.
Also, there's the Department of Economic Development money that's going flowing in relatively quickly. Council of Governments, we just approved just about 368,000 to go to Rex Development for some programs on to help with business recovery stuff as well. That was flowed through to the respective COGS throughout the day, but designed to get it back into business. So and that's just, that's the start of what is anticipated. Significant amount of federal dollars coming through the state.
And and again, our purpose is to ensure that when and if those dollars become available, we want to help steer them as much as possible that they do the most good, the most quickly for our town.
And and to the to the extent that this is funding that this town's responsible for, I mean, what is the expectation in terms of reporting metrics, success, failure? What would we hear back in what timeframe?
So what we would anticipate doing is reporting to the Economic Development Commission the status of our programs quarterly. And we would ensure that any reporting that we did providing the town would be comparable to the ARPA requirements.
Anything else?
No issues with ARPA funds being used for this.
Not at all.
Seems clear.
Yeah, it's clear, but run this by the CCM folks and also Rosewood's office. Good.
I like it in particular because, you know, it seemed generally all of the businesses in town and you know, sometimes the chamber was a little unbalanced towards retail and that type of thing. And I think there's, you know, there is a definitely need and you know, sometimes the small businesses are so consumed in day-to-day keeping their head above water. They don't take a step back and look at the big picture. I was a little involved one time with the score program and it's it's interesting how, you know, somebody from the outside can just make a simple observation that is very real. Hopefully, people take the advice and move it forward. So.
The thousand-foot view is really important to us that that is not the thing when you're spending 80 hours a week in a business, you are not looking high up and saying, what really is the issue? And you're going after anything and everything. And this is really, we think, the appropriate first step.
Well, one of the things, obviously, I support this, but one of the things I'm hoping is that this thing is so successful, you come back and say, can we have some more? Because if it's working, why wouldn't we want to fund it? So that would be my my hope and anticipation that sometime in the future, you're back. Someone will want to put in a form of motion that we're going to approve $25,000 in American Rescue Plan Funds for the Shoreline Chambers. Pilot program for business coaching.
In Guilford.
What, or whatever you want.
In Guilford.
In Guilford. Sure. In a second.
I'll second that.
Any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
I oppose, stand, recuse, adjourn, motion carries. D, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Post it.
D, can you send me an electronic copy of the materials you provided for Economic Development Commission meeting? I'm not sure I have.
Yeah, I sent right after, but I'll present it.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I'll share that with the Board of Finance tonight because we're going to get Board of Finance approval on this as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item A, discuss and take possible action on the CDVG project administrative agreement with the United Way of Greater New Haven as a way of background. This was one of the CDVG grants that we got a couple of years ago. This one is specific for housing diversion programs. And as I think you may recall, or I hope you recall, the United Way is basically our agent to facilitate the distribution of these funds because they are in the business of housing and housing diversion. They have placed resources at Women and Family Life Center who are working within the respective communities who are in danger of housing loss or housing displacement. So this is a continuation of that program for the next round of funding. And I would ask your approval for me to sign the agreement so we can continue moving forward with this project.
This is similar to something we've done at least one prior year, probably multiple years before this, right?
Yes, we have.
Some of.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So something looking specifically.
I was wondering if it's a three, just a three-year grant or if it's, that's a question you can easily answer.
Answer, I don't have it.
Okay, all right.
By the way, just because Karen does an awful lot of work in preparing with Kelly Fitzgerald from United Way, they really are consulting and they're the ones that helped us put together the grant proposals and the grant applications. There is a small administrative fee that we hold on to, and I think it's $5,000 for some of the work that Karen does. And also Karen is certified by the CDVG folks in order to participate in these things. Little expansion of her role in. So we have a motion and a second. Any further questions, comments? Let me try your mind all in favor.
Aye.
I oppose, stand, recuse, adjourn, motion carries. Appointments and resignations, which I don't think we have any. That might be a first, right? Yep.
Town properties.
Western town properties, none there. Committee reports.
I'll have more to say about this on January 3rd, but we are going to have a townwide informational meeting at the community center on January 18th about affordable housing initiatives in town. There are some, some public, some private, so it's just going to be an informational update, a public informational update.
Right. And is that, there was also, is that, is that you doing that with David Fink? Or is that separate?
I don't know.
David David Fink is a housing consultant who has been engaged by the Council of Governments to develop the regional affordable housing plan. As you may recall, the legislature in its infinite wisdom passed something that required all municipalities to have come up with a affordable housing plan by June 2020, end of June 2022. And we, along with several of our other card member towns, opted to go in on hiring consultant to build a regional plan, which we will incorporate as our our plan. So.
You know what? I I think it is. Yes. I think I think it was just that we wanted to do, we needed to do the thing with Dave, with David. Thank you.
Yeah.
But then George said, let's expand it. Let's expand the program to talk about the Widmer thing and the proposed development on Hubbard Road. Plus where Woodruff is or isn't. So anyway, so yes, I I'm sorry, it took me a minute.
And let me give you just a quick update on order if you may not even be aware of this. We had a request from Neighbor Works New Horizons for an extension of time on the agreement.
Yes, you you actually reported this.
That's right. So we we moved it and we've been in the process of working with Steve Mednick just to make sure that the language is consistent on this agreement to extend it for one year. And it's largely because of the state, the state's inability to get the money out. We've already been kicking the funds. We have been approved for the funds. We just haven't been able to get them to.
It's not anything that Neighbor Works didn't do. It's more waiting for the state to go forward with the next step.
Got it. All right. Correspondents, filling report, public works report. All right, item 13, old business. Fred, your patience has been finally rewarded. Finalized wording for the Freedom Monument. Credit for the long. The language that has been agreed to by several experts, but also more importantly, by folks on the Marine Commission. So does anybody have any concerns or challenges?
It's a lot of words.
Will it fit?
Little monument.
I'm 70 years old. I'm still learning English.
Never stop. Never stop, right? All right, I'm not sure. I'm not sure we need to formally adopt unless we want to endorse the language because it has been agreed to by the respective parties.
I I just had a question generally. So the, this doesn't reflect from whom this concept, like there's no credit here to who created this.
What's that, Fred? Go ahead.
The inscription that provided is going to be on a bronze plaque with raised lettering.
Yep.
Over to, and then on the face of the monument, on the ground itself, will have a small inscription that this was donated to the town of Guilford by post 48 of the Marine Legion.
Oh, so it'll be attributed to the American Legion to this, to the sense that this is, and obviously you brought a group here last time, and you guys put a ton of work into this. It's it's this position of the American Legion. These are the words of the American Legion.
Right. But that's a good point. I mean, it's nice to know from whence it came.
Okay, right.
It is a little long, but I'm not going to edit somebody's.
Well, besides, the Marine Commission has reviewed this.
Fred, you brought some, you brought some folks in from American Legion and also.
The American Legion and.
The F W, right?
The F W and.
Service organization. Person from Madison.
Oh, what?
Kylie Peterson. Andrew Kylie Peterson.
APK charity.
Yeah.
Foundation. We also sent it to several of the veterans that wrote the letters.
I'm thinking of. I'm thinking of more, almost like, I wonder if the town historian, is that still Joel?
It is still Joel.
I mean, I I don't want to micromanage it either and everything. It's just that, you know, it is going to be there for a long time. I don't know. I just throw it out. It just, I I don't have any problem with it.
I I do have a thought about it, but I would like to express, and I hesitate because I would never presume to be able to make a better suggestion than what you've done. But I read the sentence. "They then took what became a global war on terror back to the perpetrators, thereby ensuring this great country does not ever again suffer such a terrible attack." I pray that that's true, but.
Okay, you may not have the last version. We changed it.
Well, that's.
That's the only sentence that I thought was a little.
Yeah, it sort of seemed like it was tempting to read a little bit.
Our last review had the same concern that, God forbid, should there be another attack, it would diminish the value of the monument. So I don't remember the exact words.
Do we have?
It's the with the objective of ensuring.
Perfect. I wouldn't feel I needed to.
So there's a little qualification in there now.
Yes.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, we're not ensuring that it's not going to happen here. But that's the objective. That was the objective of the global war on terror.
Thank you.
Good intentions.
Right.
Okay.
I don't think we need to endorse this as long as it goes forward. I mean, it's coming from, it's the language rather than that this group has put together and it's committed to. And with that clarification, it certainly helps.
And, you know, you pointed out, we're in charge of the layout, and so we.
So if there is, we do have editorial control over it. But I think we have turf that to the folks who are are advocating for this. And also, we, I think we're gracious, not gracious, but we were considerate enough of the Marine Commission's position that they were included in as well. So that's the point to catch. All right.
Our our agenda does say final, so we want to make sure that that is.
This is not the final.
Well, not the one that's here, so.
Draft number five.
Trace, did you get a revised final copy?
The one I have is draft number five, a 12/11/2021. That's the only one I have.
Draft number six. Final, final.
I don't have that one.
We've all had one of those on the on the server.
I think it was set the day after the final.
Okay, I've got one that says final, final, an email from, that was copied, so that was copied on. All right, let's see if it's there. Computers just simplified our all of our lives, right? Actually, it wasn't the final, final was not attached to.
No, we got heard by.
Yeah. Final, final inscription.
I don't do anything anyway.
Anyway, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not really.
As far as we're concerned, we can move forward the way it is.
Yes.
No, the way it's fixed to the one we haven't seen.
The only change in the final, final was some qualification to that sentence in the second paragraph?
Yes.
So we basically are reading the final, final with the exception that that sentence is going to be somewhat qualified.
Fabulous.
Yeah, Tracy.
Nonetheless, Fred, I I think we're endorsing this without taking a formal vote on it because we're not we're we're fine with it.
And I think version five has the word freedom, not freedoms.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Fred. All right, new business. Public forum. Anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? There are none. I want to entertain a motion to, before we do that, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn. I wish my fellow board members a peaceful, joyful, and safe holidays. Which one it is you celebrate, including Christmas or Kwanzaa or Hanukkah, which has already passed.
Festivus.
Festivus for the rest of us, but and also to the community. So there is, we all have a lot to be thankful for, particularly living in this community, being one of those. And I know you guys shared a similar sentiment. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Try your minds, all in favor.
Aye.
Rose, stand, recuse, adjourn, motion carries.
Happy holidays.